Okay, I think we'll start our meeting tonight. Welcome to Harrisville City, coming on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Pleasure to see you out there. Appreciate your attendance. We'll have an opening. I will conduct that. Our pledge of allegiance, and would you please rise and be the people of the nation? We are very grateful to be a symbol of your night on behalf of the the city of Harrisville, the many fine people who live here. We're grateful for the opportunity with council and and staff have to serve with acid of blessings tonight, but we can take care of the business in the city that we can productive and wise and those things that we discuss and decide. But we're grateful about all the opportunities we have, and we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. All right, moving on. We have our consent items, which is the approval of the minutes for October eleventh, twenty twenty-two is presented. Does council had a chance to look at the minutes and any changes or? Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes after the line of twenty-two is presented. Well, seconded.
Have a motion and a second, Alan Peter.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, item number four. This is a recognition award. Assistant Chief Moore, would you like to take this, please?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So every year, we always look at things we can do that are gonna help our officers get the equipment and stuff they need for their job. And a lot of times, we try to think outside the box. And one of the things we do is always try to find a way to find outside sources of funding for these items. And in the past, we've turned to the Jason W. Reed Protect and Serve Foundation on many occasions, and they have always stepped up and helped us with the Caesar purchase to individual first aid kits to a lot of different things. So this is just a small token compared to the help they've actually given us. I just like to read this real quick. The Outstanding Support Award is awarded to businesses and individuals who have consistently shown generous support for the advancement of the Harrisville Police Department and its officers to further our mission to provide quality public safety services. The Jason W. Reed Protect and Serve Foundation has supported the Harrisville Police Department since its inception by providing equipment grants that provide the needed equipment for our officers. The most recent donations provided training materials for our tactical medical instructors, which is basically officer first aid in the field and allowing for the continued of that training for our tactical medical training, because we have material that we have to use that are one-time use. So we've got, thanks to their donation, we have that equipment for at least two or three more years of training. They also provided funding for purchase control bags, individual first aid kits that we issued at the end of the month, pending on shipping delays on some other items. And the patrol bags are designed to provide officers with additional equipment that will aid in a prolonged deployment or dangerous situations like an active shooter. And we greatly appreciate the continued support of the Jason W. Reed Protect and Serve Foundation. Just want to say thank you. And the bags are kind of big, but they're not massive, but we're trying to get an idea of the stuff our officers are gonna need in a prolonged deployment. So it ranges from the first aid kit that's inside. Which is the individual first aid kit, and then there's additional first aid items, and then, of course, the stuff we never want to use. That's additional ammunition for officers. Another there are kids, sorry. So there's two trinkets in here in the menu pouch. Is another spot for us to have snacks. All the officers will have what are called a meal ready to eat, which is military bottled water, and then they hold up a booklet that helps carry somebody out after we've done everything we need to do. And we're still working on a few other items. We've got one-time-use zip cups for serious situations. Hopefully, we won't have to use that, but the whole idea of finding these kits is to make it so that if our officers do have to go out on a prolonged deployment on a nasty situation, they're gonna have the gear that they need. We still got some things to put in here, but thanks to the Jason W. Reed Foundation, we have all the critical elements, and it's only because of their support that we're able to do this with almost no cost. I think I had to have this fifty percent of a couple little things where we're talking, you know, a few dollars. So the bulk of this has come from their general support. And then that's our little plaque for you folks. Just a reminder to everyone, all that what you do really does make a difference, and our officers are gonna be able to see this every day, and hopefully they're never gonna use this, but I love the idea that we're gonna give our guys the equipment that they need, and if they have to have it, it's gonna be there so that it can go a long way for us. But thank you very much.
Can we get a picture up here? That's our face. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This way. So nice to have support from outside of the sitting in and feel that. I really appreciate that. Thanks, Dennis, for, thanks, Officer Assistant Chief Moore for helping provide that for the studio. Okay, we have on item five, open office, and Chief Moore, you wanted to hear this one too?
Okay, so Master Officer Millwick came here tonight. He's got some family issues he needs to take care of, so we're gonna have Officer Corey Clark, who's now Master Officer Corey Clark, could be able to have him step up. So I'm gonna read just a little thing about Officer Clark, and by no means does this cover everything that he does for us, but he's just an incredible addition to our office. So Master Officer Clark has over twenty years of experience and has stewed himself in Harrisville by being an outspoken advocate for our officers and recently accepted the role as our peer support officer. His commitment to his craft is equalled only by the dedication and caring he offers to those he serves. And in fact, he has been described as the pinnacle for what a school resource officer should be. And if you look up the definition of an SRO, you would see this picture in the dictionary. He's very well-liked by his peers, and he's respected by everyone who knows him, and he is an excellent example of the values associated with twenty-first century policing. It's true.
Yes, please do. All right, and just read me down. I solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend.
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution, Constitution of the State of Utah.
the Constitution of the City of Utah.
and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
and I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
And we didn't get to you back.
I have heard nothing but wonderful things about you over at the school, so thank you so much for being at base of Harrisville over there. They really appreciate you. It's always nice to have someone's aide, your officer. Hey, item number six, so business items. The first one is discussion possible action to adopt Heritage Resolution twenty-two dash nineteen, which is a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Weber County for the distribution of coronavirus state local recovery funds for the construction of a new children's justice center. Chief Moore.
So this is just a follow-up from our meeting several months ago. We were gonna meet with some new information. There's been a survey in all the cities, it sounds like, are donating the amount that was asked with the stipulations that are already in the contract that will be turned over to Weber County after this, so my recommendation would be that we we donate the asked amount and then forward. This is something that the police department uses on a regular basis. Something that the community uses, so I think it's money well spent. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but that would be my recommendation is to go ahead and approve the donation.
Any questions, council? For clarification, there has been contact with the other cities, and they've all you determined that they're all.
Maria's done a, is on an email screen, and everybody's answered, and I don't think that there's anybody that that donated less than what was asked of them.
We know how many of them are using coronavirus.
All of them.
All.
That's what was, well, I don't know that for sure, but that was what was asked of them. So there were, there were varying amounts being donated, but the majority of them were coming.
I remember only seeing one that was doing a payment plan on it. If I can remember right, so.
My apologies. I thought I would request to do a review of your coronavirus. That is what I.
Yeah, that was what they were asking.
How much are we donating? Thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
That's based on some numbers that they got here three years ago about the usage of our, the children we take to there and
sixteen.
projected in the future.
Maybe the formula is based on population, not pay.
That was the numbers that Rob presented the very first time they, they came to council and and talked about it was all the numbers, how many times we use it and.
I know this has been discussed before. I know it's not easy to pay that much money, but it's essential for our police to try, and so I think it's come back to us to.
Well, I think it's essential for the whole community, not just the police department. Obviously, we use it, but it's, it's there for all the kids that are that are involved in in our city, so.
But we're gonna fund it after this initial up and running.
Once it, once it, once it's funded, that Weaver County will take it, take it on like they are now, and within grants and the way they ran it before. The biggest thing is, is the building that they're in has to be, they have to move out of the building. They can't upgrade it because of its historical status. So that's where this money is coming, is actually to build the new building. I do not know the answer to that question.
So who'd get, who is getting this funding right now? Is it Weber County? Or is it?
The interlocal agreement is with Weber County, correct, Jenny?
Yes, the interlocal agreement is with the county for our contribution of these monies. And they, the, it's outlined that it will be deposited into the Weber County Treasurer's account outlined here and where it's going to be held, and the stipulations have to be met before that money is allocated towards the construction of the building.
So you said somebody else is doing your payment plan. When will the building start?
So they have to meet certain requirements that were included in this agreement. They have to, I believe, acquire the property, go through their property, the proper zoning, and those types of issues need to be worked out before they start. I don't know that we have an exact date of when they will be breaking ground for it. I think they had to go through some other funding mechanisms. This was only a portion of the contributions that they were seeking, and they've gone through some other fundraising mechanisms before. I don't have a total amount that they need to build the facility.
I think the first if my memory serves me, I think we were asking five million for the, the development of the building. They were asking one million from the Weber County, which is divided above the cities. So they needed to find the funding for the rest of the, the amount needed. And I, I don't, I don't remember how it's going to be there, because it's been back in January. I think it's that where it was first created.
We could definitely invite Rob Lathan back and can answer any of these, these questions.
This is just my concern and my question, because I, you know what, we, we need to do this. I agree, but I don't mean I don't think we need to give them the money to have a sit and their bank accounts.
Instead of ours.
And, and till they are ready, you know what I'm saying? I, I just have a problem with that, because if they're either eight to ten months out, I mean, that's a long time for forty thousand dollars to sit around, and we could at least keep in our bank account and more than happy to write you the check or transfer the money as soon as you break ground.
That's a good point. I'm not sure if they're asking for the funds at this point, but they're asking for that interlocal agreement that we are telling them that we're gonna give them the money, and we could clarify that a little later.
That's all I'm wondering. I, I don't have a problem with, you know, thirty-nine thousand dollars. It's something that we need to do, and it's needed.
It's actually outlined here in the interlocal that they shall use the urban funds to cover eligible expenses that are necessary for the completion. These expenses must be incurred by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and paid for by the end of twenty twenty-six.
So we've got time.
As a one-time stop, a one-time ask?
Yes.
Don't say that. That's why I want to know.
Any more questions? We hear. May I have a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty-two dash nineteen interlocal agreement with Weber County for the distribution of coronavirus state and local recovery funds for the construction of the new Children's Justice Center with I want to put in this equation that it goes when you said by
as outlined.
Yeah, as outlined.
As outlined in section four, excuse me, section one, number four.
Yes.
Which am I?
I, okay, if I can see it.
Section one, number four.
Section one, number four, thanks.
In the amount of?
Thirty-nine thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
I have a motion. I'm sorry. I have a motion and a second. I need a roll call on this, right? Okay, Councilmember Wollin?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wollin?
Yes.
Thank you, Christine Adams. I appreciate that. The vote. That reminds me, I didn't excuse Councilman Chris, and he's asked to excuse him. Thank you, Chief. We are moving on, but the part is now again, Chief Moore, we're coming. We're gonna discuss the possible action to purchase radios for the Harrisville Police Department.
Yes, so this has been an ongoing battle and a headache for me for the last five years. So we're finally moving towards where we're actually gonna have some completion with this through Utah Communication Authority, and we're trying to look for our future growth and everything. So with all of the information we have, the only funding we're gonna be getting is for Class Two County, which is really gonna reduce the amount of funding we're gonna be able to get as far as grant funded from UCA. That comes out to three hundred and eighteen dollars per portable radios and three hundred three hundred and eighteen dollars per radio, and with the average cost substantially higher. One of the advantages we have is we purchase on their program now is about a sixty percent savings. Every year that we go past this, they're guaranteeing at least a ten percent increase, but they won't guarantee the the discount that Harris Radios is offering to UCA and all of Utah this time. So we're looking at purchasing the radios we may need now and the radios we need for our future growth. One of the things that we're gonna be doing in Weber County is we are gonna be the pilot program for going and corrected for our radios for the state. If we stay with our current radios now, we're gonna incur additional costs, and I think would be more prudent to just take that money and put it towards new radios with warranties and guarantee support through UCA and Harris Radios. The bill for all our thirty-three new radio would be a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Or well, one seventeen, six seventy-one, twenty-three.
For thirty-three radios.
We had to give them a tentative order at this time, but we haven't received any additional information on when we would have to pay for a lot of the payments. And we don't know if this is gonna be happening September of next year or September of twenty twenty-four. So we might have one year or two years, just depending on how that always comes down. So this is the first time they've actually given us any kind of a timeline other than it's four or five years away.
And what do you find doing with the radios you are?
So the car radios we have now, unfortunately, they're useless. They won't make the, they will not make the change over to the seven hundred megahertz digital. They're an analog radio, and they will make the first switch over, but when we do encryption, they won't work. The, the radios aren't capable of handling the module. Our current modular portable radios that we have will be able to wipe and then sell either probably to another agency, and I believe Utah Communication Authority trying to find a program where they can do that for us, where they can find buyers for it and go through that, so we're not just selling it to whoever offers, like even whatever. And we're thinking we should be able to get about a thousand dollars for it. Maybe a little bit more. And we have twelve of those. Are you looking for any other type of funding to save with the now page and everything? I, I have been looking, but I'm not finding anything right now.
It's coming out of pocket.
Like I said, I haven't got any kind of timeline on when we have to make any kind of payments. But right now, the, the standard for like on a handheld radio, which is this type of radio, the MSR, MSRP on the new one is nine thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars. So the prices are really just skyrocketing. They're giving us a six thousand seventy-six, sixty-four discount. So thirty-two seventy-two oh four, and then subtract the three seventeen eighty-nine, so twenty-nine fifty-four fifteen for each video. Which is a lot of money. The advantage we have is these are not built like when you go buy a modular talkabout or one of those kind of radios. The previous radio we used were MTS two thousand and MTS twenty-five hundreds. And those radios, depending on your department, were in serve, in service almost twenty years. So we were using MTS two thousands. I believe back in nineteen ninety-nine.
We got it for the Olympics.
Yes, so, so we got the ability to use those, and a lot of those radios are still in service, but they have the same problem. They're not, they won't move forward. These handhelds will, but we're looking at incurring, I believe it is an eight hundred dollar cost to to operate these on the new system, and I think it'd be more prudent to just buy radios with warranties. One of the big advantages with the new radios is this radio, if we lose our mountain or little mountain repeater, it's done. The new radio has the ability to hook into our first net wireless. So all of the new dispatch consoles will have that same feature. So if we lose the actual towers, but we have a first net cell power working, then our radios would still have full functionality. So that's the, the, one of the biggest boons for getting these, plus these, we have to buy an encryption license and module for, for all the Harris radios that actually just come with them.
Is the whole state going seven hundred to what at the front?
It's the entire country. We're just one of the first places to get it done. So the federal government has mandated seven hundred megahertz digital across the board for all law enforcement AMS. The reason is, is they sold the majority of the eight hundred megahertz band to the cell phone companies. So we're on very short bandwidth, a very narrow bandwidth of eight hundred megahertz. And then they found that seven hundred hertz digital is a very stable, very usable platform for us. Seven hundred analog is not worth looking at, but this new system is really stable. And then this will get us into radios for our city, and then like I said, with, with the county, we will be well-off for, you know, twenty years without having to, unless we're buying something that was, you know, broken beyond repair.
So you're asking to just order them now, or you're asking to actually pay to purchase them?
So we, we had to put in a pre-order before October thirty-first. We put in a pre-order, which did not lock us in. But what that pre-order did is wanted to give Harris an idea of how many radios are gonna be sending to the entire state. So everyone in the state of Utah that's gonna be on the system has to order, or they have to pay to have all their, their current radios that will be upgraded, be upgraded. And I believe that's four hundred dollars. But we have to do encryption on these, which I believe is another, it's either four or five hundred more for the encryption module and programming. So but yes.
So does it have to come out of the law enforcement budget, or can this be a capital outlay? And for procurement?
So our intent is, yeah, for our to move in capital, we intend to readdress our capital improvements next. Well, with our upcoming information, with our retreat that we'll be holding in January, but yes, we're trying to get out ahead of the commitment that we had to make about the radios we need to purchase. So we're kind of in the middle there. We don't, we we don't exactly know when they're gonna expect payment. We're kind of hoping that it might be next school year by the time we get it all worked out, but we don't actually know.
Right. And just, just so you know, these radios just from last year to now have gone up about twelve hundred dollars per video just in the last year. So they are they were trying to get this ready last year. It just didn't happen, and they actually gave us pricing last year, but they just, it just wasn't gonna go through with the delays, because they're rebuilding every dispatch console and every tower that's part of this system through the entire state. So once the entire state's ready, that's when they're gonna go live. And that's what's been the delay on that.
So what would you expect delivery of all the new radios?
If their timeline holds, the earliest we would see all this coming through and actually going live would be September of next year. And I think the, the latest they said would be September of twenty twenty-four. So they are they've got a new director. We just lost Tina from Dispatches working for them now, and she is a person who likes to get things done, so I think we're gonna see stuff moving forward a lot faster from now on. So they're really committed to getting this whole system up and running. And then, like I said, I, I constantly reach out. I haven't heard anything back from them yet, so I'll reach out again and see if they can just give us a timeline for it, because right now it's just a pre-order, so they have an idea of what they need to do.
Got an idea of what percentage the state, the whole state is going with the Harris radio?
I don't, but just with all the agencies that I've worked with, and they've seen in training and stuff, and the radios are using. I think you're looking at fifty percent of the radios that are being in service right now have to be replaced. So we're looking at at least half the radios in the state will have to be replaced, and then others may have a choice whether they wanna upgrade and try to, you know, make what they have work, but I believe about fifty percent of upgrade and try to, you know, make what they have work, but I believe about fifty percent of the radios are gonna have to be replaced. Because a lot of agencies are still using the MTS two thousand twenty-five hundreds uh just because radios just are so expensive to just buy and replace all the time.
So if we approve this tonight, we're not paying for the radios yet, is that correct, or we are not paying for them or?
We're not, we're not prepaying. Um we have not gotten any kind of payment schedule yet. They just want to know what's our order gonna be, and I think that it's true just to get across the board, the same radius, we're buying one battery, one leg and, you know, and not have to find, you know, or even find parts for this, so. One of the problems with the other Motorola is you can't get parts for them anymore, so as those have died, you've had no choice but to buy new Motorola radios, which may or may not come programmed to work with a new system, so. I've been I'll I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, say, it's only been about a year, but I think it's been over a year that I've been reaching out to Motorola and trying to find out where we're at with our current radios that could be reprogrammed. What do we need? How much is it gonna cost for sure? And I have not received one reply.
The estimate on on your Motorola radios, credit to Google, is quarter nine hundred dollar.
Yeah.
And you're at twenty-six hundred dollar for a new radio.
Oh, twenty-nine fifty-four.
Our approval locks us in at this point already.
Yeah, that, so the the pre-order locks us in at that rate, yes.
Any more questions?
We're trying to match you both, see how far down the road twenty years from now and how the videos could be functioning or having to be replaced or. If you know they're going to reinvent the wheel as they go down the line and add things to it.
Right, so one of the really nice things about the new radio, the new system is, is what's called over the air programming. So all of these, and this is a federal standard, so it's called AP. No, APS twenty-five. I might have that acronym wrong, but uh if they have to guarantee operability while the system is in play. So this radio, the only way you can upgrade this is, and you have to have somebody go hands-on with it. In the new system, if they make a change or if there is a flash upgrade for the firmware on a radio, they can send that wireless, that we don't have to do anything by having a a downtime for radios with them, but they can just turn it on and it'll update itself. And that's part of what we're we're paying for upfront. And then uh UCA is their own taxing entity for the state as well, so. And they should recover a lot of those, those type of fees through how they're managing their system, so if their system pushes through and and mandates an upgrade, it's like your computer, you have to do an upgrade, it'll just do it, it should come through, we should see the additional fees for that. I know, why is the picture big?
If no questions, can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the purchase of new radios from the Harrisville Police Department that were invented in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and seventy-one twenty-three.
Second.
I have a motion in a second.
Yes. Yes.
House member wise?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Right. Moving on to public item number seven, public amendments. Uh this is a public comment period where you're able to kind of uh and address the council during time of speak, you have thirty minutes and you can address the council. You understand that this is not an interaction, it's just a time for you to be able to speak, so make sure the time over you now. Both in the audience would like to.
Hi, I'm Jessica Powell. Um I just was coming to talk to you, um Jenny suggested when I talked, I'll talk to her, that this is the way to go about presenting this. Um I've noticed that there is a lack of protection for our young people as they are trying to get to the junior high. Um the west end of two thousands, um doesn't know. There is no protective crosswalk, there's no flashing lights. You've got multiple children trying to cross. Um they're coming from the north, having to cross at highway eighty-nine and two thousand to get to a sidewalk, because due to the construction, there's no sidewalk on that north side right now. So they cross once, then they go down, there's no crosswalk again at the park, so they're crossing back again. They're crossing twice. Um I know the the daylight savings time change, it's kind of improved the situation, but not a hundred percent. Um you still have lots of children trying to cross right around six hundred um east, I believe it is, or southwest, but it's center left. Um and there's no protection for them, they're trying to make a mad dash in front of cars, and when it was dark and it was stormy before the time change, you couldn't see those kids. And it was basically an accident waiting to happen. Um so I would like to request that the city consider getting another um that the, they have like the the sensor, the kids hit the button and it sends a flashing light on both sides. Um you have them right in front of the school and you have them farther east um over on one fifty, but there is nothing on this west end. And you've got kids who are coming from just right there um between the park and um eighty-nine, there's that strip across from the cul-de-sac. You've got kids who are coming from the north. Neighborhoods over on the other side of the highway who are riding their bikes to school. They're crossing south across to to the, to get to the to the sidewalk and then have to cross back again because there's to get to the sidewalk. Um you also have students from our neighborhood back here behind the city offices that are not being bused because they're within the walk zone. And so they're riding their bikes or walking or riding a scooter. And so they're already going along highway eighty-nine, but then to get to the school, they've got to cross two thousand in front of all that traffic, so. My request is that we can get a a flashing sign in there so that we can at least alert the drivers that there's a student trying to cross there to make the people a little safer. I saw one too many, especially during those, those dark daylight, before daylight savings switched. That it was just a matter of time before a lot of them was gonna get hit, so.
Thank you, Charles, thanks. Anyone else?
Um so we tend, we per se, we're doing a project where we attend school, or attend council meetings. Or attend council meetings.
Tell me your name.
Uh so we, uh I'm not expecting you to fully answer this, but we grew up uh going to uh Millennium Park as children, and uh so you've removed the fencing and we know you're building uh housing in the golf course um sector thing. Uh and you've removed bathrooms and you've removed the uh playground. Uh I'm just wondering, like, what are you going to do with that area? Are you planning on like covering it over and using it for something else, or are you going to add more things to it? That, that's really just the main thing.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Right, I'm gonna close public comments for right now. And Anna, I'll can answer your questions later, okay? Alright, we have Mayor Council following up. Mr. Fike, do you have anything that you'd like to address the council with?
Good evening, Mayor Council, just an update on what we do during the month of November. Um snow we're up to is seeing Christmas lights, uh cleaning up leaves in the parks and trying to keep as courts clean, so we can close those up for the year, uh getting our snow removal equipment ready for the parks, trails and sidewalks and things. Pro basketball is in full swing right now, going well, preparing boys' basketball, doing some game schedules this month. Um and preparing for this.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so first I just wanna let everyone know that this is Assistant Chief Moore's fifteenth year of service this month. Um so we want to congratulate him on fifteen years of service. Um. We're in the process of still hiring our officer that we lost, the Lieber County, we do have an interview Thursday. It's been pretty slow on applicants on that, but we're still in the process of that. Shop with the Heroes coming up the first Saturday in December. Um with local businesses and people have donated a lot of money to that cause this year, it's it's uh, it's nice to see everybody coming together and donating that we have enough money to do a lot of really nice things for for these kids during that, and this is the second year we've done it and it keeps getting bigger every year. Um I plan on keeping this as a yearly thing for us and hopefully it just grows and grows. So I'm really excited about that. Um December third, we are starting at the cabin at seven with breakfast and then we should be at Walmart at eight o'clock. If any of you'd like to come, we'd like to have you come visit with kids or or whatever, so. Um winter parking, officers are working on winter parking at nights. And then as far as the safe school routes, I did meet with the resource officer today and he is going to meet with the assistant principal there at Orion tomorrow to start working on an updated um safe school route or safe rest school, so we are in the process. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh I just would like to excuse Director Shinzo this evening, um that he had given me a public works report saying his department is fully ready for the snow and I'll put these written to me and appropriate fault stories for that. Uh we do have a brief update from City Recorder. Maria DeRicofero about our annexation into actual code. We've turned in the um paperwork to the Lieutenant Governor's Office and uh there were four documents that we've submitted to the um impending boundary action. Uh the finalized plats, um few letters, let's just say that. And um anyway, so we're just waiting on word from them as soon as the, we should hear back from them in about four days, they've got a ten day deadline, and then that annexation uh will be certified and then we'll go ahead and report that after that. Giving for that report. Um I think your most of us followed the election last week where our general obligation bond did not pass for our recreation facility over there at the city hall, uh complex, municipal complex. And just a reminder that that canvas of the election results will be held next Tuesday, November twenty-second at seven p.m. here. And please let Maria know um your availability and attendance, we do have to have a full um form for that. I have a couple of other things, and in light of the safe routes to school, we have also been approved recently, we met this morning with UDOT for one of their alternative transportation projects, we've been awarded funding to create a children's drop-off area at the south side of Majestic Elementary. Well, there will be a space there for cars to accommodate drop-off and we'll be communicating with the school district to relay that information to them that that funding has been um awarded and granted to us for that. And we also would like to encourage council to help spread the word that the Utah leagues, the cities and towns has essay contests for the grade school. The next year's theme is why I like my community. And we just like you to be aware of that, that these kids can submit essays to the league and they are reviewed and awarded, and their school also wins some money for the those students that are selected from that, and it's just, that's there, I can get you more information on that. If you're interested in in helping promote that, but we'd like to encourage our our schools and our students to participate in that. We'd like to have a safe debate for you all for January twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-three, from six until nine P M. We are planning an economic development, community strategy and budget work session that will be held at the cabin uh that evening. And it will be where we set the goals for twenty twenty-three, we review our strategies to meet moderate income housing report. And we also talk about our capital improvements and set the goals to align with the funding that we have available or need to request. Um as evidenced by the alternative transportation project, I'd like to recommend that was submitted by Glenn Gamble through our Public Works Department, that we were awarded and as staff, we are trying our best to find funding mechanisms outside of the general fund to help with the projects. Um in light of that, I attended the ramp grant training for Lieber County recently. We are planning to submit a ramp grant application to replace the playground equipment at the main park. It is a fifty percent match and we get those minimum points for private donations, it increases our chances of getting that ramp um grant only one to us, so staff, uh Director Fike and I were working diligently in December to meet all those requirements and uh be in contact and beyond that. We know that we also have one more safe date for the city Christmas party. December first, maybe the mayor is gonna go over that. Um at six P M. at the cabin, we have sent out invitations and we have a sign-up sheet here at the city office, it will be the usual um potluck item with me.
Jenny, what was the time on twenty-four?
It will be from six to nine, that session will be basically head up by the Lieber County Economic Development Director, she will be doing some strategy work sessions with us. And also we'll be inviting planning commissioner and your department heads to be available and we will try to have our proposed budgets ready for that discussion so that you know the needs that were anticipated for the next fifth year.
We're starting early this year. Thank you. Robert, do you have anything?
Um also, I would do a thank you for fantastic ball festivals.
Yeah, I mean, I've had nothing but great comments from everybody that attended. And it was bigger this year than ever before, and I think it's gonna just keep getting bigger. Only just wondering if you found out the extra ten minute cost. We were asking what it costs to get ten more minutes fireworks.
Well, I didn't ask uh a timeframe, I just told them that we were, we, it's possible, we may have some money to it to extend it, but I didn't, I never heard of ten minute extension timeframe, so. I can find that out. Um twenty twenty-three has been paid for and we get a discount for paying so far in advance, so that's already, it's been submitted to be paid this week or next. But we can add to that anytime with still a discounted rate since we've already paid for next year.
Okay, but I just wanna say thank you, I thought it was, it was really fun, so. The only thing I had was thanks to those who did the ball festival, it was so much fun. I couldn't believe how many perpetrators we had. They got their candy that night. Anyway, thank you to all those who did that. You know, one was instead, I had nothing but positive feedback on it.
Yeah.
Thank you again to everybody, even though we did run out of ketchup and mustard.
Thank you for participating in that night, thank you to staff, you guys, above and beyond, it was a great night. Everyone, all the departments were there, we appreciated all that. Everyone, all the departments were there, I appreciate it, all that was wonderful. Now, the only thing I'm gonna add to this is, uh, we have a new representative in our area that we re-districted, re-districted in the state, given this. We're in now the district. Eight, seven, seven, okay, we're in district eight, and we have now been put into this seven, so Ryan Locox is now our representative. He's been, uh, re-districted, put it in here, and he met with Jenny and I for about three hours a week ago, and he is very interested in what's going on here. In our area, so if you have any concerns, he is more than willing to listen to you, we have his phone number. He's, he's really, I feel like he's sincere and he's ready to help us.
That I'm already committed already, so.
Awesome, okay, so I I just wanna tell you that we're, we're making an appearance, and it feels good, um. And. That's all we have, we're gonna move on to our close executive session, which is item number nine. So we need a motion that move into that section.
Okay, I will really close the public meeting and enter into a closed executive session.
Okay, um, do I need to state this whole thing that you got, Maria? Closing my session is.
Okay. And we will really close the public meeting and enter to a closed executive session for the purchases prescribed under UCA. Five-two dash four dash two five one A B E. For discussion of the character of professional competence for physical and mental health of an individual or individuals. Strategy segments to purchase, exchange, or lease a real property. And strategy segments to discuss the sale of real property.
All right, so the motion and the second, right?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, we'll now move into a close executive session, and thank you so much for coming, but I'll invite you to leave.